Allegiance, please rise. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Feather.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. For the record, Mrs. Rogalski is not here tonight. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we're going to cover everything in the consent agenda with the exception of the special meeting July 28, 2022. So we're holding that one out. So the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 8/11/2022, special meeting, 8/16/2022, approval of minutes from the executive session, 7/14/2022, executive session, 8/11/2022, executive session, 8/16/2022, and the student parent handbooks, all schools. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Feather. Second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. The next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Duncanson.
Good evening. There are a lot on the agenda tonight. Would you like me to do the coaching appointments in turn or do you want them in bulk? All right, sure. So first, I have appointment effective August 29, 2022, of Azila Avila's Yang Custodian Knight at Community. Second is hot off the press. Just today, we appointed Tanya Ralph as the Assistant Principal at North Cumberland Middle School. Second, internal appointment of Lisa Parker at Dean Social Worker at CHS, one year only. Appointment, the rest of the appointments are all effective August 31, 2022, or September 2, depending on the bargaining unit. And those are Andy Barnes, School Social Worker, Cumberland High School. Joa de Rose, De Rizzo, Special Educator at Community, one year only. Diane Diggit, Special Educator, Cumberland High School, one year only. Joanne Malloy, Special Educator, Light, Cumberland High School, one year only. Kaitlin Martino, Special Educator, Preschool, one year only. Stephanie Skimba, Special Educator, Direct ALP, Cumberland High School. Kelly Tar, Library Media Specialist, Cumberland High School, one year only. Abigail Wishart, ELA Essentials, North Cumberland Middle School, one year only. Lynn Di Berassi, Paraprofessional ICAN at Garvin. Rachel Haruka, Paraprofessional Strive Trade at Cumberland High School. Kristin Mahu, Paraprofessional ALP, Cumberland High School. Diane Letty, Paraprofessional Classroom at Cumberland Hill, one year only. I have two resignations. First, effective August 17, 2022, Tanya Cobb, Grade Four at Cumberland Hill, and effective August 19, 2022, Kristi Patton, Assistant Principal at North Cumberland Middle School. Coaching appointments for the high school, all effective August 22, 2022. Carrie Carpenter, Boys Cross Country. Silas Copeland, Football Assistant. Martin Crowley, Girls Cross Country. Natalie Cunningham, Tennis Girls JV. David De Jesus, Girls Volleyball Varsity. Erin Gendrow, Field Hockey Varsity. Nancy Gendrow, Field Hockey JV. Gabriel Gonzalez, Football JV. Emily Gerton, Girls Soccer JV. Brandon Hanaway, Girls Tennis Varsity. William Hogan, Football JV Assistant. John Hoxsey, Girls Soccer Varsity. Justin Kara George, Boys Soccer JV. Jenna Knight, Girls Volleyball Assistant. Joshua Lima, Football Varsity. Lauren Co. Lopes, Boys Soccer Varsity. Kaitlin Marino, Girls Cross Country Assistant. Rachel Powell, Cheerleading. And Bradney Smith, Football Freshman. Coaching appointments for the middle school, effective August 29, 2022, is Michael Doobie, Boys Soccer, North Cumberland Middle School. Grace Henson, Cross Country McCourt. Brian Kuchar, Cross Country, North Cumberland Middle School. Madison Rabbit, Girls Soccer McCourt. And Louis Robbie Ali, Girls Soccer, North Cumberland Middle School. And that is all I have for you tonight.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Duncanson. Next on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on 8/25/2022. Report out of executive session votes. We did not take any votes. Next item is the vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mrs. De Monica. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, good evening. We have a great deal happening. Our first opening dates for you, Wednesday, August 31. We have in 9-1, we have our PD days for the district. Friday, September 2, we have our faculty staff orientation day. Tuesday, September 6, first day of school for 1 through 5, 6, 8, and Grade 9. And then finally, September 7, we're all back in school this fall. So that's coming up pretty soon. Bus routes will publish this afternoon. And it'll be in my email tomorrow to the families. And as always, those routes get checked by the Cumberland PD for any tweaks to the stops. But those came out around 3 o'clock this afternoon. Also, tomorrow, we'll be putting out, once again, the school calendars, school start times, end times, all going out. In terms of school safety, last time, they did talk to you about the joint training we did at Garvin back in July with EMS, police, and fire. Now, the new news for school safety is, in working in partnership with our first responders, we're going to start training in the ALIS program. And that's a more robust safety protocol. And if you don't know what it stands for, Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Around the country, there are government buildings, school districts, hospitals, all use this protocol. Both our police chief and Chief Pilkus feel it's a more robust program. So we're going to go in that direction. The first step is, end of November, we have 20 slots to have our folks trained as kind of like super users, if you will. So we're kind of polling our principals now, how many do you want per building? So that's going to start in mid to late November, I think, right now. So that's good to see. Technology, you can look around the room and see it. A lot of our Ezra money was, or a good chunk of it was spent on the flat panel displays. You can see some of them set up. They have to build each one. The company comes in and builds the platforms. Our team now, Mike's team, has to go out and image each device, 167 of them. As of tomorrow, they're half-built. We're halfway. So they're moving pretty quickly. They'll be in the buildings, and each building principal and team decide where they go first. That's exciting. That's happening. Also, with this, Chromebooks are also going to be coming in. So a lot of tech happening all at once. BF Norton, if you've been down there, you'll see a different layout in the back. The parking lot has been almost doubled in size. Through the help of the town hall, the mayor's office, the engineers, DPW, they cleared a lot of trees, a lot of brush. They put in like a whole section now that'll be tarred to gain 24 spaces in that area. We also, we looked at the parking lot. We think now we can get 56 spaces on BS property than need 55. So later on in the agenda, you'll see an item we had looked to consider that was using the bank with BVP for parking, for 16 spaces. So at this point, I would say you don't necessarily have to do that. But we can talk about that at that point in time. The good news is, through the town, picking up the entire bill for this, a lot of work, and really quickly done. So it's really nice to see. So that's at BF. I'm kind of merging them all together. School construction, it's the sprint to the finish. Truly, they are moving, putting down floor tiles, painting rails, furniture coming in, all happening at the same time. Lighting going in, cleaning underway, waxing floors, common areas all being put together. It's kind of like one of those must-see TV things where, or HGTV, where they're kind of having a house getting ready to be seen. So it's all happening. As you know, the one snag are the three beams that we have to repair in the cafeteria. And right now, they're thinking still four to five weeks. So the current thinking is, we have different options for lunch. You could be A in the classrooms, B in one of the two common areas. And also, we have old high school lunch tables. We will put in two areas, one in the courtyards and another area. So we have different options to look at for lunch for the kids. But that is the one snag that we have at Cumberland Hill. They also tarred the back today. And tomorrow, Lynch finishes the tarring. So it's really starting to look like something. So right now, unofficially, hopefully official tomorrow, a ribbon cutting for that building, potentially Friday, September 9, 5:00 p.m. So I can have you mark your calendars tomorrow if you get it finalized. But it could be on Friday at 5:00 p.m. on the 9th for official ribbon cutting for Cumberland Hill. So that's exciting. Ashton, if you go by Ashton, the whole back of the grass area is now opened up, if you will. And it is now the footprint for the new wing. They moved incredibly fast. That was all board construction. As with any construction, you find challenges. So far, at Ashton, we found a lot of ledge. Who knew ledge in Cumberland? But they found ledge. And they worked through it. They, you know, cleared it. It's problem solving, and they're doing it. The other thing they found was, back when that highway was put in, I'm not sure Ashton was there. So we found some drainage that was not on the books, if you will. It didn't exist, any drawings, but they found drainage of the highway running into the Ashton's field. So we have to have to deal with that. They dealt with it. Problem solved. Moving on. So as you, any construction project, you do find things, and they keep working the problem. We met today for our first time over there. We have a trailer outside. That's where we meet, in Problem Solve the Ashton site. So, community. Playground base has been put in. Playground mulch is put in. Still have to finalize some of the tweaks on the mulch depths. But we're going to work on that. In terms of the playground, I'll talk about it now. It's also on the agenda. We had two phases to fix the playground. Phase one is happening, I believe, tomorrow or Monday. That was planned. As I told a couple of you last week, I believe in an email, phase two is slated for the fall. The vendor last week said it won't happen until the spring of '23. That was a platform and some other pieces. And obviously, that's not okay. So we called the vendor again, and for, I believe, $3,000, they can repair what we have, and it'll be open for the fall. It won't be as pretty, but fully operational. So I authorized the repair. And we'll still move ahead to make it really, you know, a complete playground in the spring, but it'll be open in its entirety. So that's going to happen on, I believe, September 4 is the repair for the community. In terms of construction at community, they finished the construction road about a week and a half ago. They took down, some of the trees had to come down. Most of the work for all Borg's been at Ashton, not community. But that's going to happen fairly soon. Garvin is the last one we're working with. That's a waiting game, just waiting for the architect to finish their homework, to get the permits, to start demolitions. That's probably any day now. Right now, Mr. Jesus had to move our trailer from Cumberland Hill that holds our excess items from Cumberland Hill to Garvin, empty out Garvin, and then demo begins at Garvin. So a lot of things happening all at once on construction. Enrollment, every month, I give you a flavor of where we are right now with enrollment. We're really tight, K-2. A lot of people coming out. They're still coming, K-2. Right now, this year over last elementary, we're plus 17 students for elementary. Still plenty of room in grades 3, 4, 5. K-2 is getting very tight. Middles were plus 20 over last year. High school, we're down 38. So right now, this time over last year, we're kind of awash. Last month, we were plus 46, I told you. But I think Ms. Weber still had like 30 names in the queue to deal with from today. So it's still dynamic. We're getting more names. Also, as you know, some folks will stay on the books and not appear in the first day. And so we really don't know until we open. But I'll give you another update on opening on the 8th. So that's enrollment. And I think that's all I have at the moment. Obviously, a lot happening. And just, all our folks are working really hard to get us to open and to, you know, make it all happen. Thank you.
What did you have under school staffing?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. School Staffing. I'm calling it Ms. Duncanson. For school staffing, essentially, we have an update of where we are as of this day, today, at around 3 o'clock, Ms. Duncanson. So tell us, what are the openings?
Yeah, so as you've probably read in newspapers, there's, it's been quite a challenging summer with regard to staffing. So currently, we have 10 openings in, of teacher openings in the district. That's slightly higher than normal at this time. We do, unfortunately, due to late resignations and things like that, oftentimes, open school with a vacancy in place. We have resolu, patches, I would call them, for the next year, for three or four of them. We're still working out a few of them. And we're still actively recruiting for the remaining staff. And so we are hopeful that that will be resolved in the first few weeks of school. With regard to support staff, paraprofessionals, custodians, we have seven openings, two custodians and... Four, so six openings, plus a district support technician and tech. So it's seven. So four paras, two custodians, and one tech support. And again, we're trying to work through patches in some of those areas. Some we can't without bodies. Honestly, just the applicants are just not there. Positions, I've preached this to Dr. Thornton a number of times in years past when I posted certain positions. You know, overnight, I would come in the next morning and have, you know, a little project to do to go through the five to 10 applicants that have applied for jobs. I look at a listing of zero applicants for jobs quite often now, especially hard-to-find areas. So it is a challenge. I am thankful that our administrators and staff are creative and flexible with their, in out-of-the-box thinking for certain positions. But that is where we are. I don't know if you have any questions?
Mr. Collins.
Would you be able to tell what specific positions are the ones that need to be filled?
So, yeah.
Free advertising. Somebody's watching who's curious.
We have a recent vacancy of a school nurse teacher that we need to fill. Sorry. We do have math, math at both of the middle schools needs to be filled. Science at the high school and middle school. We think we have a patch at the high school, but we are, again, these are all high-need areas nationwide. And so I'm not surprised by these vacancies. But math and science are my big, heavy hitter. And then we have two special education vacancies at the high school as well. We have a few candidates that are in the queue getting hired, but I did not include them in your count today because I'm hopeful that we can get their paperwork resolved tomorrow. The custodians, I have one custodian at the Wellness Center that's open at Community School. I have one. We did repost that today, I think. And so I'm hopeful to get a few more applicants for that. And then paraprofessionals, we have at the high school, two positions open. BF Norton, I think we filled those today. So I'm not 100% sure they're part-time. And, yep, that's it.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Thornton? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Thornton, when you said that the bus schedule was released, you're talking about what has been released to you from JRM. At this time, it's not that it's published, there's still...
We actually did publish, and tomorrow, it'll go out via email to folks. I feel I really want to get out as soon as possible. So we got it out today on the website and tomorrow via the email.
And the police have already approved it?
Police are always in process. It's not like a one-hour turnaround. Many of our stops are the same. But should the police have any adjustments, they would let us know. But it's a pretty dynamic process as we go through it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Collins?
I have a question about the community school playground. Obviously, the impetus was the CSA coming in here, explaining the plight of the playground. And now, it's not going to be done according to schedule. Has the CSA been notified by Ms. Vaughn or by yourself that there's been a snag?
They were last, we found out, we told the principal right away and made sure she told the CSA.
And I wanted to thank Mr. Fiorello for working with the mayor and with everyone involved to get the BF Norton parking lot. That was a huge win in a short amount of time. So thank you for helping to make that happen. Okay, next on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, fellow committee members and everybody in attendance. The fiscal subcommittee met this evening. We have five resolutions for the committee, for your review. Four of them were tabled. One passed fiscal subcommittee, 3 is zero. We'll be talking about that later. There were no, there were no payment of the bills this evening. And the only final piece is just facilities. Dr. Thornton and Madam Chair, you just talked about the work done at BF Norton. But overall, the amount of work facilities did nonstop from the end of school last year to anticipation of the start of school this year to get the schools ready. They had very little time off. And between the internal and the landscaping that they're going to be working on now, it's remarkable what Mr. Jesus and his team has been able to accomplish. And it sounds like they're even short a custodian. So I think we should all tip our cap to the facilities people. These are the unsung heroes that work all summer when we're, you know, teachers. We're trying to forget what happened in the previous year. So anticipating what's about to happen in a couple of weeks, so.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, Policy and Procedures was able to meet on Tuesday night. We had a very quick meeting where we just made a small tweak to the student dress code, policy J-20. And we have, I've rewritten the evaluation of the superintendent, which you've all had a chance to look at. And will be, both policies will be voted on later on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Next, the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update did not meet this week. And the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee does not meet during the summer. So no update there. Next item is the public hearing, reading of the amended policies. Do you want to take this, Mr. Fiorello?
Sure, I would just ask that A2, actually, that's not A2 anymore. That is a mistake. I'm sorry? No, it's B4. It's B, yes. And I'll explain that later on in the agenda. But it's B4, the evaluation of the superintendent, and also J-20, the student dress code. So I'd ask those to be read into the record. And we have public comment for these two policies.
If anyone has public comment related to these two specific policies, you can come up to the podium. Okay, then, thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Next on the agenda is our general comments from the public. So if anyone from the public would like to speak and come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and just know that there's a three-minute time limit.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Carlson. I live on Newell Drive. I'm also a Cumberland educator and the president of Cumberland Teachers Association.
Hello. My name is Stephanie De Silva. I live in East Providence, and I am the Cumberland Teachers Association Vice President.
At the August 11 school committee meeting, the Cumberland School Department made public and voted on unsigned draft version of the memorandum of agreement between the school department and the Cumberland Teachers Association.
Ooh.
Well, continue. It's not too dark. The draft was part of a negotiation to settle a grievance and avoid arbitration stemming from an issue that arose in November of 2021. At that time, the school department refused to pay six women who did not receive a 1% bonus due to being on maternity leave in the 2020-2021 school year. Since then, three of the six women have been paid the one-time bonus, but the school department still refuses to pay the other three. The total amount is approximately $2,154. The union's position is that all of these women should be paid the same bonus as the rest of the teachers. The CTA is outraged and dismayed by the school department's actions to go public with an error-prone draft on an agreement. We believe they took this action to strongarm us into signing an agreement that misrepresents the position of the CTA. So let us make our position clear. The CTA believes teachers who are on maternity leave should be paid the 1% bonus as the rest of the teachers were. CTA wants to settle the dispute without going to arbitration, which is time-consuming and costly for both parties. The CTA believed there was a stalemate prior to filing at the school committee level that was purely coincidental that the payment was made to three of the women on the same day the grievance was filed. The CTA cannot sign an agreement that is untrue. We believe the administration made the draft agreement public at the last school committee meeting in an attempt to force us to sign an agreement that does not honestly represent the CTA's position. We have proposed a small change to the MOA shared with the school committee. That change would result in eliminating the CTA's position statement from the document while keeping administration's statement intact. We also propose an MOA that would pay the women, release both parties from future claims, and negate the need for arbitration. The CTA does not understand why this is not a reasonable solution since it does what administration claims they want, to avoid the cost of legal proceedings, which exceeds the amount the three women would be paid. It appears they are more concerned with who is right and who is wrong rather than doing the right thing. We refuse to be bullied by the administration. The CTA will continue to advocate for all of our members, and especially in response to sexist discriminatory actions like the one undertaken by the Cumberland School Department against these women.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, next on the agenda is old business. Discussion and/or vote to approve superintendent salary from the 2022-2023 school year.
Unless somebody has any need for discussion, I would approve the superintendent salary for the 2022-2023 school year. I'm sure, was this discussed in fiscal?
This was discussed in fiscal.
We'll let you take care of it.
No, it was not, I beg your pardon, it was not discussed in fiscal. It was in executive.
Essentially, what will happen is that the superintendent's salary will match the pay increase that the rest of the G6 administrators have received, which is, I believe, 2%, 2.5%. So I would make that motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve the superintendent's salary for the 2022-2023 school year. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion?
Okay, we got a lot of seconds. I'm going to give that to Mr. Collins. Second for discussion?
I do have one question, though. So you had mentioned the raise was 2.5% consistent with G6 and the other administrators. Is that consistent with the CTA's raise this school year? Yeah, the contract?
Yes.
I don't have the contract in front of me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business. Item A, update on Alphabet's education before and after-school program.
Good morning. Thanks again for having me back. I appreciate the opportunity. We, so I'm Kim Jennings. I apologize, just to reintroduce myself. And this evening, I have Natalie Peralta with me, which is the area manager for Cumberland Public Schools. But I've also brought along Jenna Labossiere, who we've recently promoted. She was an Ashton Site Coordinator and is going to be our operations specialist here in Cumberland to help support Alphabet, which is an added opportunity that we just looked at as we're going into a new school year and some of the, you know, the great programs that we're going to be offering. So Jenna, we're thrilled to have her. We've filled her shoes, but, you know, certainly, we have some still open positions, as you've heard. We're still anxiously trying to add a few extra folks to our team. But we're thrilled to have Jenna and that group around. We've been spending some good time in all the open houses over the course of the last couple of weeks, just getting familiar. We had one, we had two today, one this past Monday, getting acquainted with the schools, the new facilities, ensuring that, you know, we're meeting the needs, as I mentioned to you guys back in June, for families that do need care. The morning care is the adjustment there, the afternoon, which is very exciting for us. You know, the move, we're excited about the new move over to the new location and obviously re-establishing ourselves here with the new program this year as well. So that's really exciting. Summer is still happening. It ends for us this Friday. This is our Spirit Week, so every day, we're doing something really exciting. We've been sharing with Dr. Thornton some updates of all the field trips and the special events that we've been having on site. And certainly, when we culminate all that, I'll send it off to you guys so you can take a look at the community partners that have been in, the places the children have gone. We're ending the summer with about 130 students that we've serviced over the course of the summer, which is pretty consistent for us and a little bit of an increase. So, and that was great coming out of COVID, I guess, if you may. Last year, it was COVID. Lots of families didn't necessarily need services because it was... Lots of families didn't necessarily need services because it was, you know, things were changing, but to have 130 students come and use our programs this summer was very exciting for us, so we're thrilled to report that. As we're going into the 22-23 school year, right now, we have 298 students registered in the before and after school programs. Today, we had an additional 23 that are sitting in on our list waiting to get into the program. And again, that's just us to go through processing, ensuring that we have the staffing in place, which will put us in the low 300s, which is comparable to where we were at pre-COVID and then last year. We ended last year with 324, so we're starting already almost at that number. So we're pretty certain that that number will continue to rise, which we traditionally see in the first 30 to 60 days of program. So I'm hoping to maybe come back, maybe in that November timeframe, and give you an update on where we're at as far as our enrollment numbers and the students we're servicing. And certainly, if there's any feedback that's come back from the start of the school year, as I mentioned to you guys before, I want to hear that. You know, you guys sent me some emails after the last meeting, and I know that there were some concerns, and we want to address them right away. You know, what we're doing for your town, your community, is very important to us, and sometimes I don't always get that information. The information comes in in different avenues, but we make it right, and we lead with that yes mindset. We really want to ensure that that's where we're at, especially as we continue our partnership with you guys. So that's my update. Any questions or any additional information I could possibly share with you guys?
Questions or comments?
Okay. Well, thanks for having me, and I hope I can come back again. Yes, all right, perfect. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve overnight student field trip, CHS Girls Cross Country Team Belfast, Maine.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you once again for allowing us to petition to go to the 21st Annual Maine Cross Country Festival of Champions held in Belfast, Maine. Our cross-country team has participated in this out-of-state race ever since inception, and it's a great opportunity for us to test our mettle against great out-of-state competition from Maine, Vermont, Canada. Other Rhode Island teams go as well. I know Barbel is going once again. Mo St. Charles has since jumped on the bandwagon, as does Lincoln, and I believe one socket as well. It's a, it's the good part about being a student athlete where the part of, you learn a lot of your person when you help with the education-based athletics, and that's what we're about. And so, same race as last year, we would leave on a Friday, go up Friday night, stay Friday night, and come back Saturday after the races, which is a very long ride after you're there at 8:00 in the morning at the course and you leave. And by the time we get back here, a lot of stiff legs getting out of cars, including mine, but it's a great opportunity for our student athletes to continue to thrive in the educational setting.
Any questions? Mr. Fiorello?
Hello, Mr. Crowley. Can you just explain how the fundraising was handled? What's, what the students have done? Where the money's coming from?
Sure. The money comes from our booster club. We run fundraisers and we get donations for working. For example, we worked the Arnold Mills Road Race. We flagged and did water stops, and so there's a donation made by the Arnold Mills Road Race to our cross-country association. There's a race that we worked down in Ari Gansit. Karen Zions is the head of this road-running organization, and we work three stops and get a substantial amount of funds to our program. We have a calendar raffle going on, which has been approved by the superintendent's office, by the Rhode Island State Police, and that's our fundraising. No cost is expended to any child at all. Dinner is usually, in the past, we've gone to a church, and the kids have paid, well, we have paid $5 or $6 for a pasta dinner. Last year, we went to, there was a pizza place in town, and we called the order ahead of time, and we just ran in, we grabbed them, and we ate at the hotel because of COVID. They took very, very good care of us, so there's no student costs incurred at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Coach Crowley, transportation, is it busing or is it individual caravan of cars?
That's a good question, Mr. Collins. So transportation, we're looking at either vans or parent transportation as well. The parents are transported, and they will all have BCI checks, and so this way, we are sure that they're allowed to be around students or student athletes that aren't their own as well. Bus is just, it's an enormous cost to get a bus to go from here to Maine for two days. I even checked with Durham, and it's just, it's through the roof, so it's not cost-effective for us to do that.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowley? Okay, so seeing none, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fiorello.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Good luck, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote on indemnity agreement with entity owning 310 Broad Street in connection with designated parking for BF Norton School employees and volunteers.
So, Madam Chair, earlier I told you about the BF News. This will put on the agenda before our Wednesday analysis, getting the 56 spaces. At this point, you know, you could still enter this. However, at this point, I don't think you need them unless you want the overflow space. Once again, with this arrangement, if we took the 16 spaces, we would plow their entire parking lot for that agreement. So I really defer to the committee how you want to proceed, but right now, we do have the 56 spaces accounted for.
Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry. So if we were to go in through with this and get extra space from BVP, we're responsible for plowing their entire lot?
That bank lot where our spaces would be. We wouldn't just plow our 16, we'd be plowing that bank lot if we did this.
Mr. Fiorello?
Yeah, I, with the great work the town has been doing, I don't think this is necessary, and I would make a motion to reject the agreement.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to reject the agreement.
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So we, it passes six to zero to reject the indemnity agreement.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve amended policies, starting with A2, evaluation of superintendent. Mr. Fiorello?
Yes. It is actually, let me just pull up the right one, B4. I felt it was necessary to re-categorize the policy from a fundamental, basic commitment to board governance and operations, which is what the superintendent evaluation is, so it is now B4. As you can see, it's very simple, it's very straightforward, it's based on a lot of other superintendent evaluation policies. It just lays out the fact that the evaluation is to be a goal-setting and transparent process so that the school committee and the superintendent can work collaboratively. Also, the timeline is cleaned up a bit so that it would actually match when we start entering into contract talks as well as the cycle of the school year itself. If anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second for discussion? Or second? A second by Mrs. Feather, I should say. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Next item is J-20 student dress code.
Yes, one of my favorite policies to reopen. Essentially, we've just added some language around student photographs, which really impacts the high school more than anyone else. It just simply states that all student class photographs will adhere to the policy, to the dress code policy itself. No student will be required to wear any special garment for any photographs. This will put an end to the drape and the fake tuxedo that students have been wearing since, I think, 1996. Yeah, yeah. And quite honestly, if a student wants to wear the drape or the tux, I'm sure they could. The other item is the graduation robes, just stating that we're going to move away from a blue robe or a white robe, and we're going to, Mr. Costa's going to work with some people and redesign a graduation robe that'll be designed for all students to wear. It'll incorporate all the school colors, and it'll probably end up looking very nice, I think. So if anyone has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve J-20 student dress code. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? Second by Ms. Smith?
I was hoping to have a little bit of discussion.
Okay, Ms. Feather?
I just wanted to say, you know, I mentioned this during the meeting on Tuesday as well. The, I'm very, very pleased that we are getting rid of the all-white caps and gowns because I felt so bad for the poor girls because they couldn't wear anything underneath them that wouldn't be seen. They were transparent, and I'm very thankful that we're doing a more gender-inclusive policy, so, good job.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Fiorello, a second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. The moment everybody's been waiting for. So, so we have five resolutions, SCPR-8-2022-103 through SCPR-8-2022-106. All four of these resolutions deal with the re-schematics, the re-evaluation of contracts that have already been, we've already done. The issue that was raised here in fiscal subcommittee is why are we doing schematics again? There has been some question about costs, and Colliers has recommended this in order to make sure we're maximizing our dollar with, you know, with the fluctuation of the cost of goods, inflation, et cetera, et cetera. We had specific questions that Mr. Pignano and Mr. Jesus were unable to answer, and Dr. Thornton, that only Colliers can answer. So the fiscal subcommittee moved these four resolutions, they were tabled during fiscal subcommittee, in order for us to hear directly from Colliers as to, you know, some more detail around these resolutions. So SCPR-8-2022-103 through 106 were tabled during fiscal subcommittee, and I would move to table them to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to table SCPR-8-2022-103 to 106. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero.
And finally, SCPR-8-2022-107, the Gmail Student Safety Management System by way of Gaggle Incorporated. This is something we already have in place. This monitors communications through our email system, looking for target words, safety, you know, things, and red flag administration, which can, they immediately get notified, and they can investigate that. We are already using this, and if I remember correctly, let me just check my notes real quick, the cost is actually going down. This has been very important. Dr. Masterson was here about six months, nine months ago, talking about this, about how we red-flagged something at Christmas that somebody had sent through the school server. This is an invaluable resource. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-8-2022-107. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Demodica? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. The next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve payment of bills. I think you said there were.
There were no payment of bills this evening.
Okay, excellent. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorello?
Just want to point out that Saturday between 10:00 and 12:00 at BF Norton is the back-to-school backpack event, so parents can bring their kids down and get back-to-school supplies for free. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. This is our last meeting before the start of school, which schools open on the 6th, I believe, the Tuesday after Labor Day. I want to wish everybody, whether it's the teachers in attendance, the administrators, the alphabet people, anybody else who's affiliated with the school system, the last couple of years have been incredibly difficult for teachers and anybody who works in education, so it's my sincere hope that this year's better than it has been, and I expect it to be, and I hope it is, so I wish everybody good luck. You know, administrators, students, parents, everybody. I'm expecting a good thing. I'm optimistic about this year, but, you know, we'll see, and good luck, and that's it. We'll be talking a lot about it for the next nine months.
Hold on, any other comments from the school committee members? No? Okay, all right. Next, vote to go into executive session, I don't believe we have that.
All set.
All right, Mr. Fiorello?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello? Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor? Aye. Passes six to zero. We adjourned at 7:52.